Good evening, everyone. My name is Bruce Lukey. I'm the President and CEO of Homeport, and we're proud to be the managing member of this beautiful community here at Elam Estates. Just to give you a little background on this building, both this building, the building next door, and the cottages house 63 seniors. It was built as a partnership, as most of these are. Our partners were the First Church of God, as well as CMHA. And if you, as you drove in, you probably drove by some very nice single-family homes. Those are also Homeport homes, and they're lease-purchase homes. And they house their 48 homes. So altogether, there's about 250 people that live just right here in this community that have the benefit of good affordable housing. So we're very happy to have the City Council here. We thank Councilmember Paige for hosting, or for allowing us to host this tonight. And before I turn it over, I was told, just for housekeeping purposes, if anyone needs washrooms, they're down the hall. We'll have this way. There are beverages in the back. But with that, just thank you for coming in, and I also want to make sure that I thank, actually, our residents here, the community, for opening their home tonight and allowing this to happen. So, Councilmember Paige.
Thank you so much, Bruce. And again, many thanks to Homeport for welcoming us this evening and hosting our public hearing. And I would now like to call to order the Housing Committee's Affordable Housing Public Hearing. And on behalf of Council President Zach Klein, President Potem Priscilla Tyson, and Councilmembers Elizabeth Brown, Mitchell Brown, Shannon Harden, and Michael Stenziano, I welcome you to our Affordable Housing Hearing. The purpose for this committee hearing is to discuss the critical need for affordable housing throughout Columbus. As we will hear testimony from individuals who are aggressively working to tackle the challenges our city is facing as it relates to this issue. Within our capital city, affordable housing is in short supply, however, in large demand. Without safe and affordable housing options, it's difficult for our residents to make a better life, not only for themselves, but also for their children. And what I really want to happen at tonight's hearing is very educational. I want to have a provocative discussion on affordable housing, the challenges that we're facing. I want to hear about the work that each of you are doing, and we will follow up with hearings throughout the course of this year, as well as next year, to come up with some policy recommendations and what we want to see here in our city. And I would like to share a few facts with you all pertaining to Franklin County. Last year, the U.S. Census Bureau estimated the population in Franklin County to be 1,264,518 people, making it the most populous county in Ohio, and Columbus the most populous city in Ohio. There is an estimated gap of 54,000 units of affordable housing for low-income residents in our county alone. We have approximately 495,250 households with an average of 2 and 1/2 people per household. Also, the median household income is $53,882. We have approximately 5,728 units of vacant housing, those being 1 to 2, 3 units of residential properties. And recently, the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio released a groundbreaking report on affordable housing challenges here in our county. The report offers potential solutions and opportunities by documenting how other cities provided local resources to tackle affordable housing. And you will soon hear from representatives who serve on that committee with a brief outcome from the Housing Alliance. I will now turn it over to our panel and allow them to introduce themselves and briefly explain their perspective on affordable housing here in Columbus. And we will start with Hannah Jones, who is the Deputy Director of Community Development for the Department of Development with the City of Columbus.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilmember Paige. Affordable housing here in the City of Columbus is a focus and a priority, not only for the Department of Development, but the entire administration. And we have the pleasure of working with all of the partners at the table, as well as many that I see in the audience, in looking for ways to address and tackle the affordable housing gap. A great example of how we do this and leverage the tools that currently exist is the Milo Grogan Homes Project that Homeport currently has underway in our Milo Grogan neighborhood. This is a scattered site project that creates 33 affordable, single-family homes on former land bank sites. So, again, we have the opportunity to leverage properties that previously were blighted, that came into the city's ownership, and could go back into productive use for our community, as well as serve our most vulnerable residents. The city is also contributing home funds, which is a federal funding source that we have, to provide affordable housing. And that's in addition to unleveraging the low-income tax housing credit award that OFA gave Homeport in order to really make this a viable project. Additionally, we created a CRA, which is known as a Community Reinvestment Area. And this is a newly established CRA that is an example of how we want to leverage the tax abatements that we have in the City of Columbus and the creation of new ones moving forward. In the fourth quarter of last year, we began the process of commissioning HRNA to do an incentive policy evaluation that looked at both the commercial and the residential policies and incentives within the City of Columbus, specifically how they're performing, and if they're benefiting the populations, and also how we can be more... What am I looking for? Lost my words.
Judicious.
Thank you. Who was that? Oh, Jim Shimmer, previous city employee, right there. Saving my day. I appreciate it. Yes, in how we implement them moving forward. So specifically, I want to focus just briefly on the residential portion of that. We asked HRNA to look at four different areas of the city that currently have CRAs that represent kind of neighborhoods that are at different transitions on the spectrum. So specifically, the Short North, which kind of everybody points to as a very successful community, and one where there's a lot of conversation about whether or not abatements are any longer needed to drive development there. Then we looked at the Near East Side. This is a neighborhood where we're starting to see a lot of transition. We're starting to see the market react, but at the same time, there is still a need to address blight, vacancy, and really incentivize people to move back into the community. And then finally, we looked at Hilltop and Linden, two neighborhoods where we see ongoing struggles, both for the population, as well as the properties in that community. We asked HRNA to look at a number of items: median income, property value, and how abatements really impact the value of homes in that area. And what we found is that there are three different typologies that kind of emerged. You have our persistently disinvested communities, which have typologies similar to Linden and Hilltop, where what you see is while an abatement provides value and property value, it is not enough to completely provide what is needed to make a property affordable to somebody. So basically, if you let the market to react, rents would have to double in a community to really provide stable, safe housing, and we don't want that. So, abatements alone do not work in those neighborhoods. You need to provide additional subsidies. In our second category, we have ready for revitalization, and that's areas in the Near East Side, where you see that abatements provide value, but you also see people investing on their own. And so, they continue to present a lot of value as an incentive and a driver for populations to move to the area. And then the second, the third, is our market-ready neighborhoods, which really, the key example that we have is the Short North. And that is ones where abatements are no longer necessary to drive investment, but that oftentimes, there is revenue that's generated there. And so, the question that we're going to be looking at moving forward, and we've had a number of public meetings to garner public input, because really, the community conversation of what we do in these communities is very critical, is to look at, in these communities that are market-ready, how can we capture that revenue in a way that preserves affordable housing moving forward? So the recommendations that we will be putting before City Council and the Mayor's Office will be based on the conversations we've had with the community to look at creating typologies throughout the city that really look at the best way to recapture revenue where it makes sense, and deploy it to the neighborhoods who need the additional subsidy in order to succeed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. Really appreciate your testimony. Our next speaker is Roberta Garber, Loaned Executive to the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate being part of this important panel. And also want to say that E.J. Thomas, who's down at the other end there, is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. And we are a group of about a dozen of the key affordable housing organizations in our community that came together about 2 and 1/2 years ago to look at how you address the gap in affordable housing that Councilmember Paige mentioned, the 54,000 household gap in affordable housing, and how we can advocate for additional local, public, and private sector funds for affordable housing. So, we believe that housing, affordable housing is really the platform for achieving a lot of the community's objectives and goals. It really provides a platform for having a skilled and trained, talented workforce that live in proximity to where job centers are. It's a platform for revitalizing neighborhoods where families and children can thrive. It's very important for enabling seniors and people with disabilities to live in safe homes, and it helps people make a fresh start in our community, whether they're coming from foster care system, returning from the criminal justice system, or facing eviction or homelessness. So, affordable homes are really the basis for all of those areas being successful in our community. The goal, the big goal of the alliance is to cut this 54,000 household affordability gap in half over 10 years. And we're recommending a mixture of supply-side and demand-side solutions. So, supply-side in the housing world means that you're building or developing a home, an apartment complex. Supply-side, the demand-side solutions have to do with rent assistance, where you're giving a low-income household more purchasing power so that they can afford a basic apartment. We believe that doing this is really going to help to make community initiatives successful, and are part of some overall system change initiatives in our community, whether it's addressing poverty, increasing incomes, any of those. Affordable housing is the foundation. So, we are recommending really three strategies. And the first is a development strategy to develop homes, and that includes new construction, acquisition and rehab of existing properties, and primarily for rental housing, although also for some affordable owner housing as well. And this is a strategy that is focused, to some extent, on making sure that affordable homes are available throughout Franklin County, including in areas of opportunity, in terms of jobs, education, services. And it's also important for developing housing for specific populations who need service-in-rich housing, such as seniors and those with disabilities. The second is improving existing homes, and that is really home repair and home modification, primarily for owners, and mainly in areas that are undergoing revitalization, although there may be some need for senior homeowners all throughout the county to have their homes improved, modified, so that they can be accessible and they can remain in their homes, as opposed to moving into an institutional setting. So that's the second strategy. The third strategy is our demand-side strategy, and that's around stabilizing households by providing rent assistance. And that ranges from rent assistance that can prevent someone from being evicted, who can move someone quickly out of homelessness into housing, rent assistance that can be linked up with initiatives to help target populations get on their feet, get services, get training, get employed, and be able to be self-sustaining, and then rent assistance for those households who need long-term support, such as seniors and those with disabilities. So, it's really a mixture of those things, and we're working, and we think there's opportunities for the private sector and public sector to participate in making this happen. We're very excited about the extent to which this has risen to the top as an issue. People are working very hard on solutions, and we believe that our community is going to step up and really be a national leader in this area. So, we're looking forward to working with all of you and our local elected officials and our business community to do that.
Thank you so much, Bobby. And briefly, could you go over the, or list the organizations that are a part of the Affordable Housing Alliance?
I can. It is Community Development for All People, Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, Community Housing Network, the Community Shelter Board, Creative Housing, Habitat for Humanity Mid-Ohio, Homeport, Homes on the Hill, the National Affordable Housing Trust, National Church Residences, Ohio Capital Corporation for Housing, and United Way of Central Ohio.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Steve Gladman, President of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. The Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County, we have the longest name, but it's significant in that in 2001, the organization was established as the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus. In 2000, two years later, the county also became a funding source for the trust, and has greatly expanded what we're able to do. What we do is actually quite simple. We loan funds at below-market interest rates to the whole list that Bobby just went through and others that provide services and develop affordable housing in Franklin County. As an example, last year, we loaned about $38 million. We created a little over 1,100 additional affordable units in conjunction with our partners. Our funding, as I said, comes from the City of Columbus from Bedtak, so we appreciate City Council and the Mayor for their continued support. And from the county commissioners, we receive money in real estate transfer fees. So, we receive about $4 million a year, and it allows us to use those funds. And as that pool grows, we can loan more money, and we can create more affordable housing through the debt side of this. Now, I will tell you that even with our low-interest rates, affordable housing does not happen simply by getting a low-cost loan. There has to be some equity, there has to be some subsidy, there has to be other resources. And that's where the city and county and others, the private sector, can come into play to make that happen, to make these deal structures, you know, really viable and really work. The type of lending that we do is everything from very low-income programs for folks that have a variety of issues coming out of homelessness, permanent supportive housing, all the way up through workforce housing. So, it's a very broad spectrum. We look at loans much as a commercial lender would, except we have a much greater risk tolerance than a commercial lender, and our rates are much more attractive, and also the way we deploy our funds. Since its inception, we've done about $140 million worth of lending. We've created, at the end of this year, right at 10,000 affordable units. Now, we don't really build anything. The folks at this panel do that actual construction, and we only loan to developers, not individuals. But those, the developers can be for-profit, so Homeport and others. The list that Bobby gave you, we probably have loaned to all those folks, as well as for-profit developers, both doing tax credit projects and also just projects in the marketplace that can be affordable. So, we have a niche there that allows these deals to be structured, and to, we think it's very helpful. In 2000, February of 2016, we became a CDFI, which is Community Development Financial Institution. It's a certification of the Department of Treasury that gives us some advantage when we're trying to seek funds from financial institutions because of community reinvestment and other things. That will expand into the future, we believe, our ability to raise more money and to do more things. We've also have served as a developer, although that's not our primary role. We have done both small, single fam, or small multifamily and single-family development throughout the community. We are the primary lender to most of the community development organizations in the city that are doing rental rehab and for-sale rehabs, and those are in conjunction with subsidies that are provided from the county and from the city for those particular projects. So, our role, very simply, although it's taken me a long time to say it, is we're a lender, and we make these loans available at an attractive interest rate that helps the developers make these projects viable.
And briefly, could you address how many applications you're seeing, maybe over the course of a year, from developers for affordable housing projects?
You know, it's fairly finite in that sense. We know most of the developers, because every year, the county gets between four and six tax credit allocations a year. So, that's a very large source of our lending, and then from our community development partners. So, it could be 15 to 20 loans that we approve on an annual basis, and the volume of those loans, I mean, has gone up substantially, because the loan amounts have gone up as we've gotten more capital. So, we have about $65 million worth of assets now that we can relend, and as those assets grow, not only can we lend more on each transaction, but we can also do different types of lending. So, we can lend for longer periods of time, which is, you know, helpful to bring the costs down even more.
And typically, for affordable housing developments and projects, can you talk about the different sources of lending that developers are looking for in order to make the project successful?
Let me sort of answer that by starting with the equity part. As I said, the lending part, you know, will be a participant, a commercial bank will be a participant, but what really drives these, and on a typical low-income housing tax credit project, about 65, 70% of the total cost is through the equity raised by the sale of the tax credits. You know, without getting too technical, there's 9%, 4% tax credits. 4% tax credits are about half of that, so around 40% of the equity. So, the rest is debt, and then it's how do you, you know, structure that debt with its limited incomes and limited rents? So, to keep the rents affordable over a long period of time, that's why there's such a need for equity. If you build a new apartment community, it costs the same whether it's affordable or market rate. The costs are the cost, so it's how do you get those costs down? You get the costs down through an equity contribution on the front end, or some type of rent subsidy, you know, over time. And so, the access to low-interest loans is important, but the equity piece is probably more important, because without the equity contribution, you really don't have the financial structure that will support the debt. So, it's not a matter of just, "We'll loan you $1 million more." You don't have the ability to repay that. So, you need that equity.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Bruce Lukey, President and CEO of Homeport.
Homeport is celebrating our 30th anniversary this year, and throughout those years, we've taken a more holistic approach than just being a developer and builder. In fact, our mission is really to create a cornerstone of dignity, security, and opportunity through homes and through communities. We, what that means is we not only develop housing, and we have 5,700 individuals that live with us in about 2,200 units, half of which are kids, a growing number are seniors, probably 12 to 15% right now. But we also surround those individuals who live with us with robust resident services, as well as financial education, because the goal for us is to keep those individuals self-sustainable and to keep them housed. And so, we've, you know, we've taken this approach over those years, and I, you know, we're a proud member of the Alliance. And going back to a reference that Hannah made about Milo Grogan, and, you know, just to give you an example, yes, we are developing 33 homes, or building 33 homes in Milo Grogan, but what we're just as proud about there is it will be accompanied by multi-hundred-thousand dollars worth of investment in rehab, both on the residential as well, as the commercial side. And so, it's not only creating houses where there are lots, empty lots today, but it's also helping bring the whole neighborhood up. So, it's improving the whole neighborhood at the same time. And we, those opportunities are primarily being, we're able to do that through the generosity philanthropy, whether that's organizations like the Columbus Foundation, whether it's, you know, the banks or any other organizations around town. And so, we feel very fortunate in the Columbus community that there are organizations who are willing to support this cause. As Steve mentioned, you know, the greatest, one of the greatest barriers to be able to filling that gap, if you will, which is our primary objective, is the capital needed to be able to develop more homes. And it's, you know, the difference, again, between, you know, what we can provide and what, you know, market-rate developer can provide is, it breaks down to something, you know, actually pretty simple, and that is, our rents are restricted. What an individual who lives in our homes pays is restricted, and so, that forces, obviously, the cost of being able to deliver those services to be quite thin. And so, being able to attract capital at the right price, or equity at the right price, is really one of the barriers to being able to do more in this marketplace. And I would also add, in addition to the market that most of us serve here, which are those individuals who typically are at, who earn 60% of the area median income or below, there's a growing need from that 60% to 100% of the market, or workforce housing, as more and more individuals are coming into the Columbus marketplace. Rents are growing at two times what incomes are, and so, there's a growing need for workforce housing in addition to that. And so, I know that's one of the areas that we're all looking at, how do we also provide solutions for?
Thank you, Bruce. Our next speaker is E.J. Thomas, President and CEO, Habitat for Humanity Mid-Ohio. Welcome, E.J.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Page. It's great to be here. It's great to be part of the alliance. We've got a number of folks, a number of organizations that have all come together. When we started it, there were those who said, "What do we need this for?" What we learned was that folks don't realize that all of us do different things. We're not just out here competing with each other. That's the natural jump-to conclusion, and so, by coming together and working together, and Bobby's doing a great job for us as a loaned executive, helping us move this ball forward, but we've learned a lot from each other that we wouldn't have learned otherwise, and have been able to do some cross-pollinating that I think has been very, very beneficial to our overall work. Habitat for Humanity is also, this affiliate is also in its 30th year, and we have built over 400 homes here and in Licking County. Also, we reach out into Madison County as well. And as you know, ours is a hand-up, not a hand-out. We engage folks in financial literacy and homeowner maintenance so that they are able to be successful. It is a mission of empowerment, not of patronization. Our families get to choose from the lots that we have available. They get to choose from the floor plans that we have available that serve their particular family's needs, whether they're large or small. And so, it adds to, as all the houses that are produced by the Alliance, it adds to the infrastructure of the city. Now, you think of, typically, you think of infrastructure as roads and sewer and so forth, but housing is infrastructure for the families that live there. If you don't have that, you don't have a stable base from which people can use as a home base, and then be successful moving forward. A couple of years ago, we had Megan Sandel come in from the Northeast, and she mentioned that housing is a vaccine. If you get housing right, then the dollars that you spend on so many other things will make sense and actually help those families do a better job. You cannot think about going out and getting a job if you're sleeping in your car. You're worried about having a place to stay. So, that's why we've pulled this group together. Habitat itself, seven years ago, was stick-built only, and we determined at that time that we weren't adding nearly as much to the infrastructure of a neighborhood by just dropping in one home when you're in a declining neighborhood that needs some help up and down the street. And as Bruce is doing with Homeport and some of the other organizations, we focus now more on neighborhood revitalization. So, yes, we still do new stick-built, but we also do rehabs, and we're doing a ton of repairs, because if you can help folks stay in their home, especially, you look at the demographics of an aging population, where folks who bought their home 30 or 40 years ago paid it off a long time ago, but now they're trying to age in place, they don't have the dollars, based on their fixed income, to do a repair on the house, nor are they physically able to do them themselves. And if they don't get a little help, then the asset, the only real asset they have starts to dissolve under their feet. And so, everybody that I know who is aging wants to stay in their home. And so, to the extent that our alliance and its individual members can help do that, well, we're all about that. So, Habitat in itself, we're halfway toward raising our 6.5 million that will be plowed back into over the next five years. be plowed back into over the next five years, doing more than five hundred repairs and new builds and rehabs. And so we're pleased to have the help of the city, as we've, it's always fun to see Hannah and Rita at our dedications when we hand the keys over to new folks. Bruce, I know you see them at your dedications as well. So again, Councilwoman Page, thank you for putting this together.
Thank you so much, E.J. Our next speaker is William Murdock, Executive Director, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Page, and guests and community leaders. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on such an important pressing issue here in central Ohio and in the city of Columbus. MORPC strongly supports the development of housing policies that support affordable, lifelong communities, and the policies and incentives that help strengthen our neighborhoods and people's lives. I'm William Murdock again. I'm the Executive Director of the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, also known as MORPC. And what we are is, we're a voluntary association over sixty local governments in central Ohio, including the city of Columbus. We're the regional council for central Ohio, and we focus on the future, we focus on direct services, funding related to transportation, energy, data, land use, economic growth, and we're committed to collaboration in that space. And if anything, Councilmember, we want to provide the regional context, while at the same time, we provide direct services to households. So we are in the fastest-growing region in Ohio, and we're expected to add upwards of a million people by 2050. That substantial growth, and that type of increase in population, demands planning, and so we've partnered with Columbus and the Urban Land Institute, and Columbus 2020, and others, to look at that growth and how we're changing demographically and how development trends are changing, so that we can make sure we're proactively planning for our needs through 2050. And the need for housing is certainly going to intensify. If you add a million people to central Ohio, that's going to drive the need for housing and affordable housing. We expect through our research that we'll need at least three hundred thousand new residences by 2050. And most of these, over eighty percent, are going to consist of smaller households. This is simple demographics, there are going to be more one- and two-person households, and many of these smaller households represent a pretty significant demographic shift for us, especially as our baby boomers turn sixty-five in record numbers. That number's expected to double. And these changes demand our attention, and I think this is why this hearing is so pressing for us, because they're going to impact the ability of our region to supply housing of all types, but especially safe, affordable housing that's attainable across the region. As part of this, many of you know MORPC is a transportation organization, so we advocate for that infrastructure of multimodal transportation, so people can get from their homes to jobs. We have partnerships with some of the folks here at the table to look at areas like Rick and Becker and job centers across Franklin County, so that we can make sure that job centers are connected through transportation to where the affordable housing is. We also think that there are pressing concerns for central Ohio's older residents, and we think that as we're looking at affordable housing, that we need to look very closely at the growing need of accessible housing through things like universal design. We're expecting the population, again, in central Ohio of people over sixty-five to double to about four hundred thousand in the next thirty-five years. As part of that, we've been pleased to work with a number of agencies, including the city of Columbus, on something we call Age Friendly Columbus. And now, this is an initiative designed to help people as they age and as their abilities change, and to help our communities make sure they're getting out in front of the ability to provide housing and easy access to services and amenities. Now, through Age Friendly Columbus, we've learned that many older adults do not believe they are financially prepared for retirement and the costs that can arise, and housing's a big part of that. We know that only twenty-eight percent of Columbus residents who are older have access to age-friendly home modifications that they need to stay in their home, which is a key component of affordability. So as part of this study, Age Friendly Columbus, we're working to help residents and local governments like Columbus and the real estate community plan ahead so that we have affordable housing options in their own neighborhoods as people age. We think this is pretty critical work to help us avoid things like displacement, foreclosure, and evictions to many of our most vulnerable residents. Now, equally important is our work to address existing housing stock. And so MORPC is a direct service provider of home repair and weatherization or energy efficiency services for those living at or near poverty in Franklin County and Columbus. And so through this work, we're discovering that there's an ever-increasing need for families who rely on this support for home repair and for controlling their energy costs to stay in their home, to get ahead of their utility bills, helps them stay in their home. So we have a number of partnerships, again, with the city of Columbus, Columbia Gas, AEP Ohio, Franklin County, United Way, PACT, and others, to do just that in central Ohio, and there's an ever-stressed need for that. We also learned recently, we're working on a study with Franklin County on what we call the Franklin County Energy Study, and we discovered that energy costs are a key component of affordable housing. Because it sounds common sense, but you need to study these things, there's a correlation between the burden of energy and those living in poverty. And we've discovered there are thirty thousand households in Franklin County who are paying three to four times as much for their energy usage as they should be, which doesn't even include things like transportation and their housing costs. If we can address some of the energy crisis in these households, we think that we can help with the affordable housing crisis as well, so they can spend more of their hard-earned dollars on the housing and other things that they need. So there's a lot more information we could talk about, but again, this is a really important issue for us. A growing region demands more attention on making sure we have the housing for our workforce and for our residents. So thank you, Councilwoman, for the chance to express our support for your work, and we look forward to working more with you as we go forward.
Thank you so much, William. Our next speaker is Robert Bitzenhofer, Assistant Vice President for Planning and Development with Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. So for the past eighty years, providing affordable housing has been at the heart of CMHA's mission. Currently, we provide housing for over thirty-three thousand residents of Columbus and Franklin County, and about fourteen thousand apartments and other types of housing. About over fifteen thousand of those residents are children. Councilmember Page mentioned in her opening remarks that area median income is about fifty-three thousand dollars a year. Our residents' average income is about fourteen thousand dollars a year. We also have about twenty-three thousand households on our waitlist who live in our community. And we assist about twelve thousand five hundred households through our voucher program. People call that Section Eight or Housing Choice Vouchers, and about sixteen hundred and fifty other households at properties we own in our portfolio. In both the voucher program and the CMHA assisted housing, we provide, residents pay about thirty percent of their income towards their housing costs. This includes rent and utilities, and CMHA subsidizes the remaining costs. A little over three thousand landlords participate in our voucher program, and our vouchers are used in nearly every zip code in Franklin County. So as you can appreciate, this is a significant program that offers housing choice and mobility while leveraging both the public and private sector. Through both the voucher program and the properties in our portfolio, we serve families, seniors, clients with disabilities and mental health and addiction issues, and clients who've experienced homelessness. Our largest ongoing project is the transformation of the Near East Side neighborhood in Columbus, including the redevelopment of the former Pointexter Village Public Housing Site into the new Legacy Point at Pointexter. We have a hundred ninety-one units, new units of mixed-income housing leased up at Legacy Point. We'll start leasing another eighty-seven units here in the next few months, and we'll close on financing for the remaining one hundred fifty-nine units in early 2018. So Steve's organization has provided some gap financing as part of that project. I saw Boyce earlier from NextGen, he's helped us out with some property transfers, but by far, the city has been the biggest champion of this project from the beginning. So we thank you very much, especially Hannah, for your support. We are also taking advantage of HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program to make repairs and upgrades to the assisted properties in our portfolio. That will allow us to continue providing high-quality housing opportunities at these properties for decades to come. Excuse me. And finally, we're partnering with the city to provide some workforce housing at our East Franklinton redevelopment on Rich Street, to help low-income parents working on their college degrees find an affordable place to live at Scholar Houses Phase One and Two on the Near East Side, and to do the same for youth aging out of foster care at Scholar House Phase Three, which will be coming next year. And to use affordable housing as an intervention to reduce the rate of infant mortality through the Celebrate One program. So we're just a little bit busy, that's a quick run-through, but thanks again for letting us participate.
Thanks so much, Robert. And our final speaker is Brad DeHayes, he's the owner of Connect Realty.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, and all the interested parties here today. I really appreciate being asked to be part of the discussion. I am a for-profit developer, Connect Realty. We own just a little over eight hundred affordable housing units. We manage over twelve hundred units here in central Ohio. Some of the products we've brought to market here recently have been the first micro-appartments downtown, located at two sixty South Fourth Street, which was, prior to that, was a low-income housing tax credit project that just needed an injection of capital and a new plan to keep it from being, you know, more of a market-rate product that would not be deemed as affordable. So we came up with an affordable product price point on that. We also have, at the corner of Long and Front, if you've been downtown here in the last couple of weeks, we just peeled the face off of a historic building, and that whole block, we're converting it from office into workforce housing. So those are going to be income-restricted units directly across from the YMCA. So those are going to service eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, which I think, you know, that's one of the core focuses downtown that is a real issue, as rents skyrocket and prices skyrocket on real estate, is continuing to provide housing, because the transportation issues that affect downtown make it incredibly difficult for people that are making anywhere from thirty to seventy thousand dollars a year, makes it difficult for them to try to get downtown, to get to their place of employment. I'm on the board of the Columbus Apartment Association, which is, you know, the leading group of apartment owners here in central Ohio. I am also on, Steve Gladman is on that board with us. Both of the projects I just named actually were made possible by bridge funding by the Affordable Housing Trust, which is Steve's organization. So, you know, that bridge capital is such a critical component to be able to put together projects like this. One of the other groups that speaks highly to this effort is, I'm on the collaborative, Prevent Family Homelessness Collaborative. The Prevent Family Homelessness Collaborative was brought together about eighteen months ago. I was actually asked by the Columbus Foundation to join as a for-profit developer, which typically in these circles, it's not common to ask a for-profit developer to participate, but at the same time, we viewed it as an opportunity to bridge the gap between landlords and some of the nonprofits that are typically involved. And it's been fantastic. I mean, some of the groups that made the collaborative possible are our funding partners, which are American Electric Power, Cardinal Health, City of Columbus, Community Shelter Board, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, Huntington Bank, Nationwide, the Seamer Institute, the Columbus Foundation, and United Way of Central Ohio. Without them, we wouldn't have had this long runway of being able to put together a path of different voices, being able to kind of focus on the holistic issue of what leads this cascading effect of homelessness. Our goal is to cut homelessness in half by 2021. It's an aggressive goal, but we have the Community Shelter Board at the table with us. One of the things that we are currently getting into is a pilot program, which the pilot program initiates best practices amongst landlords, primarily so we have a common ground with the interaction between tenants and landlords that could be at risk. So the Apartment Association is joining that fight with us, and we're trying to adopt best practices and have a model that we can teach other landlords across central Ohio. And we think that's the first step. It's, you know, homelessness combined with affordable housing, what we found is it's such a complicated, multifaceted issue. You know, it's a living wage issue, it's a destabilizing events issue, you know, it's a transportation issue, it's an economic mobility issue. One of the things that I think is amazing is learning from, you know, all the people up here at this table is, you know, what these tag words are, and what the key concepts are that create this. I think there's a huge disconnect that this collaborative, that I'm on, to prevent family homelessness, has actually helped fill. And once you understand all the core issues, you can see that a lot of the groups that have been in this field for a long time, you know, there are cohesive areas where they work together. And I think that's what we've learned, and we've tried to focus our area right now in a pilot program to help, you know, provide services in a timely fashion to tenants that are in need. So this pilot program will be put out here at the end of the year, and we're expecting in the next eight to twelve months to have some data. Hopefully, it's going to be something then that we can scale, we're not sure. But, you know, without our funding partners, it wouldn't even have been possible. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Brad, and I would like to thank all of you for your testimony this evening, and for just helping us lay the groundwork and understand the work that you're doing in our community. So I do have a few questions, and feel free to answer them. Everyone doesn't have to, it's just kind of how you feel, and I promise it won't be too hard. But my first question, Bruce, you kind of talked about this, how do we define affordable housing, and how should we be defining it if we're not doing it correctly now?
Affordable housing is actually not a housing issue, it's an income issue. I mean, affordable housing really is defined as anyone paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And unfortunately, here in central Ohio, I think almost thirty thousand, or fifty-four thousand households are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. And so it's really an income-related issue in what, you know, what they can afford from a housing perspective. In many cases, that means we don't have enough housing, but in other cases, it means that individuals are just living well beyond their means. They're living in housing, but it's well beyond their means. And so, as Brad said, it's a multifaceted issue, because it's not just a real estate issue, it's a jobs issue, it's an educational issue, it's a health issue, it touches so many different things. And so it's, you know, how to solve the problem can be done all kinds of different ways and attacking it from different angles.
Does anyone else have any additional comments?
I guess I just want to reiterate that one of the issues we're really facing is we're having historically low income growth. So there's a cost increase in rental rates and housing rates is really not that strikingly high. It's the fact that we, for a very long period of time, have been stagnated with, on the income side. So it's increasing the burden, and as Bruce said, you know, thirty percent is sort of the number that's always used, but if you think about it, applying that same metric to all income groups probably doesn't make a great deal of sense. If you only make fourteen thousand dollars a year, which is kind of Robert's clientele, thirty percent is a huge burden, even if you're just at thirty percent. If you're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you want to pay fifty percent of your income for housing, that's probably a choice and not a burden. So I think sometimes we use the same metric for all groups, but the impact is much different. So when you're very, very low income, even thirty percent is a huge drain on your budget, and any, you know, fobble along the way, whether it's a car repair or unexpected healthcare bill or something, really puts you fairly far behind. And that's the work that Brad's doing around eviction. I mean, people are evicted because they can't pay their rent. I mean, it's ninety-five percent, it's just they can't pay. And so we need to figure out how to intervene earlier in that process, in that legal process, to address that. And we know stable housing creates better health outcomes, better childhood health outcomes. outcomes, better employment outcomes, better educational outcomes. So it's really an investment, but it's one that is challenging to make and from, as a public official, you know, there's a lot of pressures on you to invest in a lot of things, but certainly the folks here understand housing, and we talk a lot about financing and construction because that's what we do. But it's really about the people that are there and stabilizing those lives and stabilizing those communities.
Just to build off that a little bit, you know, I think you can look at like a spectrum of affordable housing. It all kind of, it all falls into the umbrella of affordable housing, but, you know, folks, several providers around town, including CMHA, have built and operate something called permanent supportive housing, where it's very service-enriched for, you know, folks with disabilities or addiction or something like that coming out of homelessness who need, you know, a roof over their head to start their kind of journey, and they bring their services in to where they're living. So Franklin Station is CMHA's example of that. We have a certified healthcare clinic onsite, a food bank onsite, and a lot of intense services for those clients. But then moving from there, you know, there's a little, you know, less service-enriched, you know, you may get a voucher, may stay in one of our assisted housing facilities we have in our, or facilities that we own in our portfolio that's just, we're helping you with your rent, there's not as much intensive service delivery. And you kind of make your way up, you may get a voucher where you're out, you know, on your own, looking for your own housing and much more independent. And you can also look at like workforce housing is kind of the end of that, where you're stabilized, but, you know, in order to live close to where your job is, you know, there may not be, if you're downtown, there may not be, you know, affordable options for you available down there. So something like workforce housing at 80% to 120% AMI is also, I would say, considered affordable.
Another way of thinking about the affordability issue, and that's looking at our housing market. And there's a group called the National Low Income Housing Coalition that publishes data every year on the housing wage. That is, what do you have to be able to earn to afford a basic two-bedroom apartment in every county in the U.S.? And so in Columbus, in Franklin County, the housing wage this year is about $17 an hour. So that means someone working year-round, full-time, would need to make $17 an hour in order to afford a basic two-bedroom apartment. And here, the rent on that apartment is $800 something dollars a month. And so when you look at what, where the job openings are, of the 10 occupations that have the most job openings projected in central Ohio, there's only one of those jobs, which is a registered nurse, that pays that housing wage. So you can be fully employed and, you know, making not enough to afford a basic two-bedroom apartment. And there are, for every household that needs some sort of assisted or subsidized housing, there's only one unit for every three households. So there's a huge deficit in the nature of work and the nature of the rental costs continue to move things in the wrong direction on the affordability issue, which is why, from the Alliance's point of view, we need to really do something now, and we need to do something fairly large. Otherwise, it's not going to make an impact.
Thank you so much, Bobby. And I actually listen to my next question. When we say 54,000 units that we need, that's a big number, and we didn't get there overnight. So my question is, from your perspectives, what kind of, what caused this issue, the affordable housing crisis, and how did we get here? And what were some of the signs that maybe we could have picked up on a little earlier before we got to this point?
I don't think it helped when we had the problem in 2008, where you had so many folks who owned a home who lost their ability to pay for it. And when they lost their home through foreclosure, ended up having to go out into the rental market. So you had a finite number of rental units, and Economics 101 says, if you flood the market then with a bunch of folks who need housing too, you're going to cause the cost to go up. And Bobby's absolutely right. Two-bedroom apartment now is $851 in Franklin County. So, I mean, that's just one element of why we're where we are.
Yeah, I would say one of the things that's happened nationally, not just here, is a result of the recession and changing preferences of households, there has been a flip from predominantly owner-occupied housing, at least in the city of Columbus, to predominantly renter-occupied. It was really fairly surprising when we started looking at that data, but the percent of owner-occupied households has gone way down, and it's a national phenomenon. So that puts a lot more pressure on the rental market to produce units for those folks who want apartments. I think the other thing to recognize is, and I know we've worked a lot with the Alliance on the framing of what we're talking about, but that 54,000 is really not units, it's households. So there's 54,000 households who are at poverty level, paying more than half of their income for housing. And as we talked about before, the solution is partially around the supply and development and rehab, but it's also partially around demand and rent assistance. So in our market, even though prices have gone up compared to other places around the country, rent assistance can still be an important solution here. We're still have more, our rents are more reasonable than in many other parts of the country. So when we talk to people around the country, because we've looked at what other cities are doing, we hear frequently, "We wish we would have started addressing this issue sooner." It's Denver or in Austin or some of those cities that are way beyond Columbus in terms of housing costs. And so I think we're in an advantageous position that we can still address and we can use supply and demand-side solutions. And that's how you kind of work your way into that 54,000 household gap, is both dimensions of the solution.
So I think that that's one of the reasons that the city saw a lot of value in undertaking the HRNA study, to begin to look at, from a regulatory standpoint, also the work with Morpsey and really understanding the trajectory of where we're going, and hearing from a lot of the other cities that, hey, you guys, now, for us, it's a crisis, right? But we hear from a lot of cities, "You guys have a problem. We have a crisis," right? So for them, they see us at the beginning of that arc, and we really want to be able to capitalize on that with all the work that the Alliance has done, to really say, not only how do we ensure that the finances that we have and we can provide are targeted to the most vulnerable, but how do we also use our incentives and our regulatory ability to bring down the cost of development, so that we're using a number of strategies to really kind of control it before it becomes a larger problem?
Piggyback on that, the context of the good news that we are in the fast-growing, successful region that we are, is that we also are going to have increasing pressures on affordable housing. And so just since 2010, we've added about 150,000 people. And so when you think about the affordable housing needs that we had five years ago, well, we need more now, and looking down the road, we need more. So I think the strategy that we really need to look at is not just the quantity, which is really important and is getting worse, but is all of these supporting pieces to make housing in the right places and make it accessible. And we've partnered with a couple of the organizations, actually three of them at the table here, to look at the Rickenbacker area. And I mentioned that earlier, but we have a lot of unfilled jobs in that area, but not the right kind of housing or the transportation to connect those jobs to people. And if we're going to solve the affordable housing crisis, we have to look at how they have access to those jobs, where the housing is, and how are we able to keep people in their homes? So the good news is we're not as bad as our peers. The bad news is the economy keeps going, the growth keeps coming, and this is the time we need to put the measures in place to get in front of it.
Thank you all so much, and I truly appreciate, again, not only your testimony this evening, but answering those questions, and I believe providing our audience with a really good idea of the work that you're doing and what we need to do in order to move forward. I would now like to shift gears a little bit and actually going off your last comment about keeping people in their homes. And previously this year, I partnered with Franklin County Commissioner Marilyn Brown, as well as the Dean of the Ohio State University's John Glenn School of Public Affairs, Dr. Trevor Brown, to announce a commission of an eviction study. The goal of this study was to research the underlying causes of eviction through interviews with landlords and tenants, and to create policy recommendations that can positively change the eviction outcomes in Franklin County. Today, we have two of the OSU students who have both recently graduated and received their master's degree, so let's congratulate them, who were responsible for this outstanding research. And I want to acknowledge their hard work and give them both the opportunity to address the audience and their findings. I would like to call Brittany Klein and Kelsey Shannon to the podium. Thank you both so much for being here.
So thank you all so much for having us today, especially to Councilmember Page for bringing us all together. If I had to summarize our research in two words, it would be my research focused mostly on who, and I would say Brittany's research focused mostly on where in the city these evictions were happening. So to give you a little more context, again, Franklin County processed 19,000 evictions in 2016, and 2/3 of those resulted in court-ordered evictions coming down after that hearing. As she mentioned, Councilmember Page is working with Franklin County Commissioner Marilyn Brown, as well as Dean Brown at the John Glenn College of Public Affairs at the Ohio State University, to identify the root causes of these evictions and some potential policy solutions. So working on some of our background research into what are the causes of evictions nationally, as Steve mentioned on the panel, stagnant wages resulting in inability to pay rent, job loss, the rising cost of living, rising healthcare costs, incarceration, unexpected costs popping up, or something that I heard from tenants a lot. They're getting an unexpected healthcare bill, they're getting an unexpected car repair bill, and that's throwing off their entire ability to pay any of their bills for the month, but more importantly, rent. Effects of evictions are going to be loss of home and residential security, but furthermore, material hardship, job loss, as EJ said, you can't get or reasonably keep a job if you're living out of your car, you don't have the ability to shower, how are you getting your kids to school, and then eventually homelessness. A prior study of emergency housing in Columbus, Ohio, a few years ago, reported that 35.5% of families in emergency housing cited eviction as the primary or secondary reason that they were homeless. Studies also show that evictions disproportionately affect women, low-income families, and minorities. While few studies have been conducted nationally, there is no systemic data collection about evictions at the national level. So when we sat down to really look into why is this happening, who is this happening to, there was no data available. There's a lot of data out there on foreclosures, but really hardly any existing about evictions. So when we wanted to sit down and look at what's going on in Columbus, we really had to start from scratch. So my research focused on, I went down and surveyed tenants down at the Franklin County Municipal Court. They were super excited to talk to me at 9:00 a.m. on weekday morning, as they're waiting to hear if they're getting evicted or not. And I basically surveyed 30 tenants with the goal of collecting demographic information, as well as just narrative information, hearing directly from these tenants, what were the circumstances that got you here, have you been evicted before, and what information can we learn from that? So to give you the demographic data, which I think is the most insightful for this panel, 96.6% of respondents reported paying less than $999 a month in rent. 50% reported that they were currently working full-time, so more than 40 hours a week. Only less than 1% reported they were working part-time. The remaining, so 26.6%, were permanently unemployed, receiving disability, and 13% were temporarily unemployed, but did report actively seeking employment. 66% reported at least having one child under the age of 18 in the home on a permanent basis. And the biggest way they reported this affecting their kids was not only the residential security, but having to move potentially schools every single time that they get evicted. In terms of marital status, 50% of respondents were single, 26.6% were divorced, 10% were married, another 10% widowed, and 1% were separated. In terms of the male-female breakdown, 86.6% of respondents were female, only 13.3% were male. Racially, 73.3% were black or African-American, 23% were white. Specifically, black females represented 65.4% of total respondents. In his recent 2012 book, Matt Desmond, who is a leading researcher on evictions, he's a sociologist at Harvard University, he described this phenomenon, how evictions specifically affect black women in communities just like ours. "In poor black neighborhoods, eviction is to black women as incarceration is to men, a typical but severe consequential occurrence contributing to the reproduction of urban poverty." And I just thought that was important to bring up again. 65.4% of respondents are black women. I'll let Brittany talk next about her specific focus on the study, and that's more where in the city these evictions are happening.
Thank you, Kelsey. So I really wanted to do two different things with my research, and that was to compare Columbus to other cities and see what other cities are doing, and then to compare Columbus to itself and see if we can pinpoint a moment in time where this really started impacting us and what that means for us. So I was able to work with Legal Aid Society and get the data of all of the filed evictions in Franklin County since 2005. And what I was able to see was that there really was no, you know, pinpoint moment in time when this really started becoming an issue, and that consistently, year over year, Columbus has more than 18,000 filed evictions, and there really is no significant change from year to year. I was able to take that data, and it had the information of the landlord, as well as the ZIP code of where the tenant resided whenever the eviction was filed. So I was able to then create heat maps and find out what areas are affected more and where these are occurring. And it turned out that 41% of all of the filed evictions came out of only six ZIP codes in Franklin County, and it was in three different clusters. So those clusters were the Whitehall-Blacklick area, Hilltop, and then the North London-Minerva Park area. So these are areas where we have seen that economic growth has been slowest. The wages have decreased at the slowest, or I'm sorry, they've increased at the slowest rate, and the median household income is consistently in the mid-20s to low-30s. So it really was not, it was surprising, but it wasn't. It just put into solid data some of the assumptions that we've had. So then I looked at Columbus compared to other cities and wanted to see what other cities had done in order to address this problem. And so I randomly picked different cities that were within the top 25 largest cities in the United States, and I wanted to get an equal cross-section of whether it was west coast, east coast. And so what I found was really not that surprising, in that when there was a high median household income and there was a high minimum wage, there was a very low-reported instance of evictions, and the unemployment was down, and poverty was down, and homelessness was down in all of the areas that had higher incomes. I specifically really focused in on New York City and Washington, D.C., because they have very recently addressed this issue. And so I found that some of the policies that they put into place could very well be an idea of something that we could implement here. And so Kelsey and I took all of the information that we had, and we compiled some recommendations and, you know, handed them over to Councilmember Page and Commissioner Brown in order for them to be able to assess and see what would work best here in Columbus.
Thank you so much, Brittany, Kelsey. Let's give them both a round of applause again. You can both take your seats, but I truly appreciate the work that you did, especially throughout the school year, and just the information that you provided was really insightful. Some of the things that you said were jarring, but it lets us know that we do have some issues that we need to look into. And it's not only providing access to affordable housing, but making sure we're keeping families in their homes. So again, thank you both so very much. We're now going to enter into the public comment portion of our hearing, and we do have, I have five speaker slips here. We typically allot three minutes for speakers. We don't have a timer here, so I'll be a little flexible with that, three to four minutes. If you get a little over, I'll look at you and say it's time to wrap it up. But I would like to call our first speaker to the podium, that is Victoria Byrd. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and welcome to the podium.
Hello, my name is Victoria Byrd, and I live at 1651 East Sycamore Street. Right now, I am in a, I have a disabled son, he's a quadriplegic. And the city put a notice on my door to vacate because the landlord did not comply with the codes of the ceiling, the roof is raining on all three floors. So now we don't have nowhere to go. They gave us two weeks to move. So now, this Friday, I have to put my son into a nursing home, and I have to find a place for myself to go. So right now, I'm just going to... So, right now, I'm just going around, trying to go all over the city, trying to find a place for the both of us. I don't want that to happen. I don't want my son to go into a nursing home. I've been taking care of him for a few years now, so that's about five years now. So, my thing is, what shall I do? What help can I get for me and my son to stay together? Because we don't make enough money, we're both on social security, and now that this has happened, it leaves us out and about, where are we going to go? I don't understand where's the help. I need the help to keep my son and I together.
My name is Dana Jones, I work for the City of Columbus, and to ensure that you can have a private confidential conversation, I'm going to point out my Housing Administrator, Rita Priest, right there in the audience, and if you would take the time to follow up with her, we do offer relocation assistance, depending on whether or not you qualify and the circumstances of why you were vacated, which initially, it definitely sounds like it's worth a conversation with Ms. Rita, and she can try and work with you on providing some funding to assist with relocation.
Okay, and I'd also, I would like to thank Gerald Furlough from the city, he was trying to help me relocate, Jill Watts, also from the city, Amber, she works with the housing specialists, and also Emily, she's also with the Molina Company, and she's also trying to help us. I just want to thank you all for, you know, coming and trying to help us stay together. Families, I don't want families to break up, I don't like to see that, and it is very hurtful. My son, he really doesn't even like, because he don't want to go. I don't know what else to do. We're supposed to have been out of there on the 2nd of October, but we're still there. And, you know, it's been raining, and it's a terrible sight. And I just want to thank everyone, I'm glad I came here to speak amongst everyone in the community, and thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Byrd, and thank you for sharing your story with us. I am sure that there is someone in this room that can assist you as soon as this meeting is over, so thank you. Our next speaker is Dimitri Hatzifotinos, he is with the Columbus Apartment Association. Welcome this evening, and again, you have right around three minutes. Thank you so much, Dimitri.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dimitri Hatzifotinos, I'm an attorney, I represent the Columbus Apartment Association. And first of all, I'd just like to say that I think that this committee and that affordable housing is incredibly important, and I think this is a great initiative from the city. Thank you, Councilmember Page, for putting this together. Ultimately, our office files evictions, we're in eviction court on a regular basis, and the members of the Columbus Apartment Association obviously have evictions, and evictions are a part of their business. And so, I came tonight to provide a little bit more insight and education about the eviction process, and also to make a policy recommendation specifically tailored to try to avoid eviction judgments, which I think really are an impediment to people seeking future housing. So, you heard statistics earlier about eviction filings and eviction judgments, but what really hasn't been discussed is that the actual number of set-outs in Franklin County last year in 2016, based on conversations with the Franklin County Service Bailiffs, were limited to about 1,400 actual initiated set-outs. And why that's significant is because while you may have 19,000 filings, only 2/3 of those filings go to judgment, only about half of those filings are actually executed on, and then only a very, very small percentage of those filings are actually set out. So, what that tells me, as someone who's in that business, who's there every day, is that the filing of an eviction, and then the eviction judgment, serves as a practical impediment to getting future housing because of screening and other protocols that landlords are using, just as much as being dispossessed because your stuff is actually physically removed from an apartment. So, ultimately, there are plenty of procedural ways to protect against that, there's legal defenses. The most important thing to do to protect against the filing of an eviction is obviously something like what the collaborative is doing as a policy initiative to try to get people upstream and get demand-side funding to prevent that gap. However, once we get to eviction court, I think there's also something we can do. And so, the Columbus Apartment Association has drafted a local rule that we would propose for implementation at the Franklin County Municipal Court. And what this local rule would require would be to have a plaintiff or a landlord who initiates an eviction, attach a notice of abandonment to an eviction filing. And in the event that the tenant vacates the home, removing their possessions, and anyone else in the home vacates as well, they would be able to send this notice of abandonment back to the municipal court, or even back to the plaintiff, and the plaintiff, the landlord, would have the burden, and the court would have the burden to dismiss their eviction case if the tenant says they're out. Because I think one of the most practical issues that you have is that people are getting evicted potentially, that might have already moved out, and that information isn't getting back to the courts in a timely manner. And while the landlords are being educated constantly by the Apartment Association and others to walk their units and make sure that they get possession as quickly as possible to avoid the eviction judgment, ultimately, empowering the tenant to give back possession without getting that eviction judgment will, I think, cut down the number of judgments taken by 10 to 20% next year. That's a guesstimate, but I do this for a living, so I feel like that's an educated guesstimate. And also, it will then keep an eviction judgment off of somebody's record, so that if they do go to find future housing, that judgment is not an impediment. I do have copies of the rules that we're proposing for anyone that'd like one tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dimitri, truly appreciate your comments and you coming down, and it just shows that this is going to take a total collaborative across our community, across sectors, those who are filing the evictions, who are passionate about this issue as well and want to see a decrease, you know, it takes all of us. Brad?
These discussions are what needs to be had, because there's a lot of confusion as to what is the normal process of an eviction, and there's different landlords. You know, the Apartment Association is an organization brought forth by landlords who, you know, advocate and try to promote best practices, but then there's landlords, like our first speaker had, you know, that have active roof leaks going down through three levels of their unit, and she said that she was getting evicted in two weeks. You know, responsible property owners know that you shouldn't be doing that, it's outside of the process, I have no idea how that would go through. I do know that there are a lot of people that are available to help, such as Rita Priest with the City of Columbus, but we're trying through the collaborative and through the Apartment Association to spread best practices, that way the managers of these apartment complexes, you know, are more of an advocate even for tenants on best practices, because some of these discussions need to be had. I mean, I went back to our property manager, our office manager, that manages all of our property managers, and I asked her, you know, to look up, you know, what do you think is the biggest injustice that you see? And she brought out our application, and she said, you know, on our application, when we pull credit, look at this credit report. And I looked at it, and I said, well, yeah, they have an eviction within the last two years, that's something, obviously, that, you know, we wouldn't rent to, you know, that's part of our scoring process. And she goes, but they weren't evicted, that was a filing. But on the credit report, if you look at how it was reported, I couldn't tell the difference. And, you know, I've read thousands of credit reports, and it's one of the things, I think, that eliminating that confusion and promoting best practices, good landlords in the community want to take that approach, we want to do right, we share interests with our tenants. We are seeing, for the first time in my career, we're seeing a competitive rental environment, we're seeing upward pressure on rents, which is really scary when we talk about the Affordable Housing Alliance's study. If you think about 54,000 households paying more than 50% of their income, you know, that leaves zero margin for error, and it takes an incredible amount of financial discipline not to fall behind, so timeliness of these services is critical. So, I do think, you know, I want to thank Mr. Hatzifotinos for coming out and taking the time to actually think through a process that can help, and I think that's where, that just shows, you know, some of the good work that's being done by the community, you know, I think knowledge is critical.
You know, there are programs in place to help those individuals who are teetering toward potential eviction. So, for example, I know every year, we probably provide $80,000 to $90,000 worth of assistance through the Columbus Foundation's Gifts of Kindness Program to any resident, and part of the qualification for that is they have to have a job to qualify for that. But, you know, something typically has happened, and it could be, you know, things that we wouldn't think would impact our lives, but when the decision has to be made between fixing my car so I can get to work and paying my rent, I mean, those are the real-life things that happen, and so, through this Gifts of Kindness Program, and it's not just the money then, it's also making sure that we spend time with counseling, working with them from a financial counseling perspective, so that those can be avoided potentially the next time. So, there are programs out there that I think landlords maybe can take advantage of, too.
What we've found in the collaborative is there are programs in place to service a large percentage of tenants that are in need, it's a timeliness issue. And that is the vetting process from when a request is made to, you know, to what funds actually get dispersed and when, in the eviction process, is one of the toughest things that we've actually had getting a grasp on, because there were no best practices. You know, and if you don't have landlords using the same method of the process, it's very tough to figure out, okay, where are these injection points, and thus as landlords, how can we introduce services when we're the ones that are in contact with people? How can we introduce services without discriminating? You know, I mean, fair housing is obviously a real issue for a good reason, and it's one of the things that we're looking at right now, that timeliness component is absolutely critical, because getting these funds to the tenant, you know, like what Columbus Foundation has available, I mean, it's fantastic, we get them dispatched in a timely fashion, and we can avoid the eviction.
Thank you both. Our next speaker is Sarah Loken with the Community Shelter Board. Welcome this evening, and again, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I promise I will be brief. Good evening, Councilmember Page. Just a quick thank you to you and your council colleagues and the administration for your longstanding support of the Community Shelter Board and its work to end homelessness every day. We are a proud member of the Affordable Housing Alliance, and really appreciate the relationships that we have with all of the agencies represented on the panel tonight. We echo the testimony that's been shared all across the board about how important it is to identify funds for developing affordable housing in our community. We all know that a safe place to live is among the most basic of all human needs. A lack of affordable housing is a major cause of homelessness, and simply, housing is the solution to the very complex problem of homelessness. Our community could invest in affordable housing and avoid having to build more homeless shelters, and that's what we would love to see happen. Because our name is Community Shelter Board, a lot of people don't realize that the majority of our budget goes towards housing and not towards shelter. Last year, about 600 families and 3,000 single men and women were helped through our rapid rehousing programs, and we oversee about 2,000 units of permanent supportive housing, which is the proven solution to end chronic and long-term homelessness. Bottom line, about 1,000 people will sleep in shelters tonight, many of them tomorrow will go to work, and we need to put safe, decent, affordable housing within their reach. So, thank you for creating a platform for this very meaningful discussion, and for your proven passion for helping everyone in our community succeed. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Sarah, and thank you for the work that you do in helping combat homelessness here in our city. Our next speaker is Tracy Taylor. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Page. I have kind of like a two-part question for the panelists. Just within this year, 2017, I've had eight friends that all had vouchers, had to move. One friend was living in our home for the last eight years. They had to move, not because of lack of payment, but because the landlords were turning their properties into regular market-rate rent. They had an extremely difficult time finding housing because landlords are not taking these vouchers anymore. I had a few of them that ended up in a hotel for a few months. I didn't realize the vouchers would cover that, but I guess the voucher covered that for them for a while. Is there any plans to address that? And also, could we think about creating like a committee or coalition to try and work with landlords, educate them, and get them to agree, or get some incentives to accept vouchers, or maybe during some of these rehabs, I do a lot of things in London, I talk to quite a lot of property owners that are rehabbing, but their market rate is not quite, the people still can't afford the $700, $800, it's just not quite there. And then the second part of that, also, another thing I get a lot while I'm in London, is there any plans for senior housing in the London area?
First part of that question, so just as a little backstory for everyone to understand how the voucher program works, so, we are allowed to, so the resident pays their 30% of their income towards their rent, and CMHA picks up the rest. Our funding for that voucher comes through the federal government, through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they have a whole bunch of rules for how we're allowed to fund those vouchers. One of the rules is you can only, you can only support up to so much subsidy per voucher, and that's based on fair market rents. And so, HUD establishes fair market rents for each county or each metropolitan statistical area throughout the country, and then you're allowed to, you know, fund your voucher based on those rents. So, that means that we cannot, you know, afford to pay as much as what landlords in some parts of town can get at market rate, based on, I mean, just the way it works. So, we are seeing, that's why we're seeing folks like your friends get in that situation. So, there's nothing that, once the landlord is in the program, there's nothing that compels them to participate in the program forever. And so, that is, you know, a function of how the voucher program works. It's, you know, unfortunate for every resident who has to go through that, and it speaks to, you know, a lot of what we talked about tonight, and a lot of the unintended consequences of a successful community, a community that's growing and seeing a lot of new jobs come in, is that when rents go up, landlords who traditionally participate in the program like ours see a different opportunity. So, I mean, there are, as far as funding, there isn't another option for CMHA to get these landlords to participate. We can work a little bit on the fair market rents and use some exceptions through HUD, but that's not going to get at the larger problem that, as rents go up across the community, that this, you know, is an issue that we have to tackle, I would say, not just the housing authority, but, you know, the community as a whole.
The, as Robert said, the issue's really at the federal level and how they're funding the Section 8 program, so, fair market rents are probably neither fair nor market in many areas, which is the fundamental problem. So, you're limiting the amount of funding that the local housing authority has, somewhat artificially by the way you fund those vouchers at the federal level. So, if they're not fully funding the value of those, and they don't always, their rent studies are probably flawed and not always contemporaneous with the market, when you see rising rents, you see that drop in participation, and then when rents are not as rising as fast, you see some bounce back. But as you see areas that are somewhat gentrifying or improving, you see that a lot. So, when you see a neighborhood that's transitioning, you'll see a lower participation rate by private owners, because it is a private program, the owner can decide to be in the program or not, unlike other programs where they're project-based, so that particular, it's usually larger apartment community, must take Section 8 vouchers, or that's the only tenants they can have. So, that's some of the pressures that the market has when we see these increases, and it creates this displacement. And that's one reason that, in many areas of the city, people won't take vouchers just simply because the value of the voucher is much below the market rents.
Important part of the alliance platform is a locally-funded rent subsidy program, and we're looking around the country at innovations about how communities have made rent subsidy work. So, one of the advantages of a locally-funded rent subsidy program is we can make whatever rules we want. It's not HUD money, it's not HUD rules, it's what would work for the community. But we've also been looking at, there are cities that are now putting programs in place that are intended to encourage landlords to stay in the voucher program, and these typically are funds that the community puts to And these typically are funds that the community puts together to tell a landlord, you know, if you will take a household with a voucher, we have this fund. So if something happens, if the person skips out without paying their rent, if they, you know, do damage to the apartment, if something happens, this fund will make you whole. And also, in some communities, they use it to make sure that apartments stay in the program, so it may pay a couple of months' rent if an apartment is vacant until a new person with a voucher can move in. Sometimes they pay double deposits. I mean, there's a lot of different innovations that communities are using to try to increase the pool of landlords in the program. It's an issue, not just in Columbus, but everywhere. It's probably, again, not as bad here as in some other places. So we're recommending as part of a local rent subsidy program, and even as part of what CMHA is doing, that we explore some of these landlords' programs to try to encourage them to be in the program and stay in the program.
I think that's, that's exactly where the conversation needs to go. We have a lot of outside pressure of capital coming into Columbus, Ohio. We're an incredibly popular Midwestern city. We're seeing rapid growth. We're seen as a safe haven for idle capital right now. I get calls at least twice a week about buying apartment complexes that we own. We don't even entertain offers. It's that aggressive. One of the things that we're seeing is, you know, why would an outside investment group or large, large capital group or venture capital fund want to come in and, and purchase bulk property in Columbus, Ohio? Well, they want to create margin, they want to create value. What are they, what are they doing? Well, you know, brokers are pushing deals, people are collecting a large number of units, and they're trying to say, well, you know, you can add value to the property, we can leverage it at a low interest rate, and then we can increase rents, and that's how you create margin. If we look at where we came off the economic cycle seven years ago, you know, it was difficult just to get people to pay rent, it was difficult to, you didn't think about adding value and renovating real estate. You know, it was kind of like, all right, we're going to get through this, and that's what everybody thought. Nobody was looking to buy in Columbus, Ohio unless, you know, it was, you know, someone who could see the future, you know? So what happened over the last three years, though, as, as interest rates stayed low and people started to see momentum, upward momentum, and some of the new findings that we, that we had on demographics and population growth coming from Morpsey gave a lot of confidence in Columbus's market, people knew then that, okay, we've got a short amount of time where interest rates are low. We can go in and we can refinance, but how do we establish a higher value with our refinance or our debt? Well, you have to get higher rents because it's based on income. Okay, so people would go in and recapitalize their property, drive up rents, and if it was a Section 8 property, then they would see that, okay, after we recap capitalized it, we can go market rate, and now the value's higher. And that is, that is a market norm that is incredible, it is one of those double-edged swords of, of, you know, where we're at as, you know, as a robust, you know, community. So one of the things that I think is going to be critical is having these discussions because, you know, if you intersect that timeline of, okay, you know, either incentives or capital is available for these renovations in order to maintain that affordable housing, I mean, I think there's a large number of responsible owners in Central Ohio that, that'll entertain the discussion, because as inflation hits, everything changes. Everything changes. You know, you're stuck in the debt that you have, you're not refinancing. So at that point, you know, you look for, okay, how do you recapitalize a property? So I think the timing in the next two to three years is absolutely critical. Otherwise, the gap is going to get larger, significantly larger.
I would agree with that. When I first made my introductory remarks, I talked about capital and the lack of capital. One of the things that we at the Alliance are looking to create is, for lack of a better word, a strike fund. So if you think, just the exact scenario that Brad just talked about, typically those transactions, someone coming to this market to purchase, it happens very quickly. It happens within 30 to 45 days. Financing is readily available to whomever that buyer is, and typically, our organizations don't have ready cash like that. And so one of the, one of the solutions that we're working on with private organizations is to create a fund to allow us to be able to purchase those properties and to stabilize them and keep rents affordable. But that needs to happen, because right now, it's exactly as Brad described. The, I'm going to answer your second question, too, about Linden senior. That, everything boils down to capital. So yes, we're very, we'd be very interested in, in developing senior, and in fact, have a couple on the drawing board. What, you know, we would finance that using a tool called low-income housing tax credits. Wonderful tool, unfortunately, very short supply. So, you know, a third of the applications that organizations like us make to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency to be awarded those credits are approved each year. So there are just not enough credits to be able to do that. And so the difference between wanting to put something in and then getting an award to be able to actually see it happen is really the gap of time. And so, you know, yes, I mean, there is interest there, and the issue is can we, you know, can we get it done and can we get those awards?
Thank you. Stanisha Newton? Hello, thank you, and welcome to our hearing. Yes, it's good. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for joining us this evening.
Hello, hello? Okay. Hi. Okay, I have a different perspective. So what I've noticed is that there are a lot of people who are on assistance, that have been on assistance for a very long time, and they're very capable of contributing to society. And I feel like that instead of looking at numbers or focusing on numbers, we can focus on the quality of the tenants that you guys bring in to help and create programs like Scholar Housing. I think that's an excellent program. I thought that was amazing when I found out that that existed. I thought maybe we can do something similar to that for professionals, or young professionals, or aspiring professionals. And just, my honest opinion is to make the more, the programs more stringent. I feel like that that would definitely help and just kind of get the people that are just staying on it because they're comfortable out of the way, so then people that can actually contribute more to our economic growth can have that chance if they're in a bind somewhere, and they can have that chance to help push Columbus forward. So I don't know if you guys have any ideas, or if you are taking ideas from the community. If that is the case, then let me know where to send it to. Where can I send a proposal? Because I have a ton of them. And I want people who will help collaborate with, you know, not only the government, but there's, for you, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't want to forget to say this with my three minutes. Safe Families for Children is a program voluntary, and they can help you with your child, to give your child a safe place to be taken care of while you get on your feet. And they just started. So if you could just look that up, it's Safe Families for Children. Look it up on Google, they're taking families in. So I know some people, some real estate investors, I've been, you know, you know, talking to different investors that have incredible ideas to help low-income families, because they don't want to stay low-income. They want to grow, they want to help. And I would love to know, who do I need to reach out to or talk to, so that we can help bring some fresh ideas or even help you with existing ones that would complement whatever they're thinking of? That's it.
So great ideas. And one of the things that we've, we've talked about with the Alliance's rent assistance proposal is what we're calling targeted time-limited rent assistance. So right now, if you have a voucher from HUD, we're not allowed to put time limits on it. Somebody, as long as they're income-eligible and, you know, buys by whatever rules of their lease, you know, we can't put a time limit on how long they get the voucher. We have found, though, that, and because my, in my other job, I'm in CMHA as well, that our average resident is using our programs about seven to eight years, so it's less than we thought it would. But we really want the flexibility to say, there are certain groups that need a little help to get over the hump, working on their education, working on getting training, employment, but we have 23,000 people on the CMHA voucher waitlist right now. And in a given month, we probably allocate 70 vouchers, 70 to 100 vouchers a month. So there's tens of thousands of people who need that assistance, and we don't have the ability to say, you know, you can have it for this many years. But with a local rent subsidy program, we would have the ability to do that. So we're looking hard at how do you link up rent subsidy with the kind of programming you talked about? And there may be different kinds of programming for youth, for people returning from prison system, for people who have been homeless, for people in certain kind of job training programs. So lots of opportunities, I think, if we can get that more flexible funding and not be restricted to the HUD rules around vouchers.
I, oh, go ahead, Rob. So just to follow up a little bit on that, with, with CMHA and the HUD programs and the rules that we're under, there is a, a separate program at HUD called the Move, or a demonstration called the Moving to Work Program that allows, housing authorities that are part of that program are allowed to do a lot of different things with their vouchers in their, their voucher programs than are typically allowed under normal program rules. The HUD is expanding the program, they haven't started expanding it yet, but they are, and CMHA is looking at joining that expansion so that we can do a lot of what Bobby just talked about, that the Alliance is proposing, but also do that with the vouchers that we have. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean that all 12,500 vouchers have time limits all of a sudden, it wouldn't mean that at all. But if you can test a couple different types of rental assistance with the flexibilities that HUD allows you in this program, then we can see which one of those may work better in our community, and then look at maybe expanding it, trying different things as we move on.
I was just going to add, so first of all, thank you for that. And I would love to hear some of your ideas, you know, the whole, some of the point behind the shorter-term rental assistance, and the importance, I think, of it is to use it smartly and strategically. And, and, you know, on, you know, teaming up with, you know, with organizations or workforce training programs to allow someone to go through an apprentice program for one or two years, while we can take a little bit of the burden of how much they pay per month off their back, not all of it, but some of it. And, and as they go through that program and then, you know, exit that program, they now can move into a position where they can pay for rent. And so I think you're, you're absolutely right on, and it's being smart about how we use the limited amount of money that we put toward this and what's the end goal at the end of the day. So I appreciate that, and I'd love to hear some professional comment.
I think what you're talking about is empowering. And as you continue to grow with a little bit of help, which is what we're talking about here, I think there's an opportunity for a model program in the country. So thank you for your thoughts.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Newton, and would definitely love to sit down with you as well. Thank you. Patricia Segura, sorry. Thank you so much for coming down. Again, you have three minutes.
I have two questions, a statement, and thank yous. I would like to thank Shannon Green, CMHA, for helping out. I'm an advocate for Victoria Byrd. I'm also a commissioner with Milo Grogan Historical District. And I'd also like to thank Charles Tomskin, Ms. Daisy Milner, Pastor Lee, for representing Milo Grogan. I also would like to thank you and everyone else who are extant to help me out. The first thing, I have been working with Victoria Byrd on housing, and I have been helping her through with Mr. Littlejohn and Mr. Furlough with the city. And so far, we have came across houses to where they say it's for rent, they say it's for rent, then turn around, when they find out that the city is going to inspect their house, that's when they turn around and say it's for sale, and they change their mind. And say, okay, you know what, I understand you have a quadriplegic son, but we, where she lived at, she lived, need to make it clear, because she's not very outspoken. She lived where she lived at now, Sycamore, for 20 years, 20. Not five, 10, or 15, 20. She lived there for 20 years and worked at OSU for over 22 years. And then the landlord is elderly, so she has gotten ill. So that's how all of this ended up happening to Ms. Byrd and her son. Now, myself, I was homeless, you would never tell. I went to the truck stop in 2008 and 2009, took showers, but you would never notice. Worked as a contractor, moved here from Cincinnati to take care of my mother in the Milo Grogan area, you would never notice that I was homeless. Anywhere it goes, I still kept myself up to get the job that I have today, which is four of them. The problem I have is landlords, and we're talking about the Linden area. Not only the Linden area, but I lived in a place, after I came from being homeless, lived in a place for seven years, and have not seen the landlord in two years. This particular landlord on the Weber, in the, in the Linden area, huh, she has vets, she has veterans that lives there. One particular veteran, he was in the hospital, had a heart attack. This woman turned around and served him an eviction notice, knew that he was in the hospital. Then came up with all these crumpled-up charges and got it, I have it on videotape. She would take tree limbs out of your yard, Ms. Page, and put it in your yard, then go down to the court and file for an eviction. I have it on videotape. Everything I mentioned, I have it on videotape. This woman has also turned around, this company, so-called company, also turned around where, when soon as you move out, you're letting, you're letting them know within 30 days or 60 days, this lease that they have, this lease that they have, you have to give a 60-day notice prior to the time that you have moved in, because you, your lease expired within that year, then you turn around and re-sign a lease. But the, but the changes, it have changed, it have completely changed to where the tenants, the tenants, don't have no choice but to move out or get ready to serve an eviction. You do have some landlords that is just that evil, just to try to keep you there and will serve an eviction notice, and that's why some of your eviction notices are so high. It's because you have some landlords that would do just about anything to get extra money to do what they need to do, because they won't come out to police their own property. And before you move out of their property, you can move in within one week, because your tenant has sit there cleaned the windows, power washed the house, elderly people getting up cleaning the gutters, cutting the grass before they move out, when it done rained the whole month of April. And some of these tenants are elderly, and they can't do it. But guess what? They got an eviction notice! For what reason? Where is it? Where do we actually draw the line to a landlord can actually charge these ridiculous charges for tenants that has been there this length of time, and then double-charge them for any work that you have to do on your own property that is not the negligence of yourself? Where does wear and tear come in at? Where does it start? Where does it end? What is wear and tear? And I just want to say thank you, and that's what I have to say. Awesome.
Thank you so much, Patricia, and thank you for your advocacy for many of the residents and constituents in your area as an area commissioner. And I would say that we need to connect those individuals with the Legal Aid Society of Columbus, so that they can look into their particular cases, why that they are being evicted, and they can provide proper defenses if those defenses are there. And I can provide you with that information after our hearing. And our final speaker this evening is Mr. Jeremy Thomas. Thank you so much for coming this evening, and again, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Page, and thank you for the panel. I came just after work, so sorry for the shorts and jogging. But, yeah, I just had a few... after work, so sorry for the shorts and jogging. But, yeah, I just had a few ideas and then two questions. I don't know if any of you guys have researched outside of the country. I was, went to Miami University Urban Planning, and we studied a lot with Vancouver's way of affordable housing. They do something that's very creative where they put it on the developers. We have, we don't have to worry about the capital coming to Columbus. We have Ohio State. We're the capital city. I believe we will always have people that want to come here and invest into our city. So with that in mind, with Vancouver, they actually make it where developers that want to move in or want to build, especially downtown and close to downtown, where they have to have a certain percentage of their units at affordable living costs. That mixes up the people that make very high wages with people that may make very low wages. Also, I have a master's degree in mental health counseling with the psychology, the sociology of people mixing with that. We all know that it's not sometimes about what you know, it's about who you know. These connections intertwine, helping our city become even more of a place where people want to move, and also increasing the ability that people have to make more money. The next is with people with our age in this city getting older. I believe the Urban Commission, looking at the age being 50-plus in the, by 2020, 2030, something about that, public transportation is going to have to be an issue that the housing has to be intertwined because we know that gentrification is something that is unavoidable. So we have to keep those people connected to being able to come downtown or get to their jobs. And I'm not sure how much you've looked into Bogota, Columbia. Their transit system is, for being, I guess, quote-unquote, "third-world" country, the capital of the country is thriving because of the way they utilize public transportation. The bike paths that we have here, we're on a good start, but the way they, they call it upside-down streets. They pay attention more to public transportation, biking, walkability, where it brings people into the street, once again, connecting people. And also, it brings people to markets so that businesses want to come here, also bringing the capital that you talked about. So that was a question, if you've looked into that. And then, as we've been talking, one of the other ideas that kind of sprung up when the young lady here was talking was with the Vancouverism idea, one of the things that I thought would be pretty creative is to have a program where the people actually, who might need that quick assistance, is also given that. I know we have programs that give opportunities for people to learn financial literacy. If you live downtown, if you live close to downtown, you might be able to do away with your car, or might not have to use it as much, going on with the public transportation, pretty much bringing in to your pocket money that could go towards rent or potentially buying a house in one of our neighboring cities. So that, those were the ideas. And then the question, just if we've looked outside of the country, because there's a lot of cities that are doing phenomenal things that could be tailored to Columbus.
I'll let William, the real planner, talk to most of you. But I can tell you that even within the country, there are similar models. In Portland, it uses a demand on developers. Charlotte's a good example of transportation corridors, and I know Morpsey does a lot of studies in those regards. So I think there's international models, but there's also models within our country. The thing I think you always have to keep in mind are similarities in our market and some other factors. So it's not always as easily transportable, but I think those are all good things to consider. And I know William, that's what he does for a living, so I'll let him speak to that.
Thanks for your comments and your research. And I'd love to hear more examples and more ideas as we have time. But we look at other regions around the country, and in Canada and other places as well. And there's a lot to learn, both on the housing side, but the transportation side. And some of the really interesting things we have going on right now that really get to the heart of the matter, what you're talking about, is we've got a number of initiatives with the city and other places to look on. At Morpsey, we call it complete streets. So looking at bikes, walkways, other forms of transit, ways to get people from their house to their jobs. There's a lot of work going on in that area. We've also got a neat study coming up with the city of Columbus and Coda and some other partners to look at what we call transportation corridors. This is going to be something you'll be hearing a lot more about in the fall, where we're looking at the types of transportation we need along corridors, and the types of housing, and how that connects jobs, and are there different ways to do it. We're working downtown on different ways to give people transit passes because sometimes you can't afford the bus pass to get you to the job, to get you the money, to pay for your transit pass. So we're looking at a number of those things, but you're exactly right. It's a big part of the equation.
So I think what I heard kind of in your question was, it reminded me of something that is kind of at the heart of what the Alliance is doing, what, where we've kind of, the housing authorities' change, our kind of strategic thinking over the years is that the traditional ways of funding, you know, affordable housing are not, you can't rely on those like we used to. So voucher program funding is basically flat. Public housing funding from Congress has gone down substantially over the years. So looking at, you know, whether it's, you know, local rent subsidy, whether it's other programs in different cities, in different countries you've tried, you know, whatever it is, that's the future. And so, you know, we've talked about some ideas here tonight, you know, so the housing authority is looking at a couple of different ideas. So, you know, just to give you an example, you know, our, under state, Ohio state law, housing authorities are exempt from property taxes. So how can we use that effectively as an agency to create more affordable housing? So there's a lot of different ideas out there that we're kind of kicking around, but that's just something, from the housing authority's perspective, that you use every tool that you can possibly find to try and provide housing because the answer is not going to be what it used to be.
So I was chuckling because you mentioned Bogota. And the first time that I heard about Bogota was open streets and the concept that they do. And specifically, it was proposed by, I think it was Yea Bikes in 2012 for the bicentennial. And I will tell you, it blew a lot of folks' minds, right? Like, you want to shut down the street to do what? But now, you know, here it is, so many years later. I can't even do math anymore, five years. And it has started to become a staple in our community, and it's gone to different places. So I think that a lot of people understand the value of the integration of people and place, and the importance that complete streets have, and the importance of making sure that people of all income levels have an opportunity to be involved in that and to be empowered by it. So really, the goal of the city and all the partners here in collaborating and investing in studies and different sorts of tools is to build the toolbox so that we can really implement a lot of the things that you're talking about. So way to bring it all home at the end. Good job.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. And this concludes our hearing today. Again, I would like to thank all of our panelists for your testimony, for coming out this evening, and for the work that you do. I'd like to thank Brittany and Kelsey for your eviction study and for presenting your findings to us. That was actually the first time that they presented. I think we're going to take them along a couple more times and have them share their findings. And I thank you all for coming here this evening. It definitely shows that there are many of us who are passionate about this issue and want to work to come to some resolutions. And I've been telling myself, Columbus, it's time to move. Not move out of our houses, but it's time to move and make sure that we are finding affordable housing solutions for those 54 families who are currently, right now, in a very sticky situation. So I look forward to working with you all. Again, this will be the first of many conversations that come up with some policy recommendations and getting our entire community together to address this issue. Have a good evening. Thank you.